Okay.
And we, I'm sorry, I was switched. Um, did we have a motion to open?
Oh, motion to open the meeting. You're right. Is there a second?
Lanfear's second.
Roll call.
Yes, trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightken?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so, um, the, the meeting's called because, you know, there still are, um, some concerns about, uh, public safety and building security. We do have a meeting, public meeting scheduled tonight. Just wanted to sort of, uh, address some of the, you know, concerns that were raised prior and, um, come up with a course of action going forward. Um, you know, there are, is the option to simply hold the public meeting. I did reach out, um, based on our last discussion to the sheriff's office. They will not have, um, a deputy or an officer present in a meeting room. It is because they have, uh, had so many requests from municipalities all over as well as school boards for this. So, um, they realized it was probably spend most of their time just handling security details for these entities and felt it not be the best use of their resources. So, they, um, Captain Alberta has said that they will, in fact, be able to park a, uh, police cruiser in front of Village Hall. And, you know, we're happy to do that, um, but suggested also in the future that we make, you know, more concrete security arrangements, um, if we are to continue with public meetings this way. So, there's that. And, um, Jeff, you, you, uh, sent an email out to us saying, you know, that the, ability for us to have virtual meetings is still in effect through the fourteenth. Yeah.
I put that in my email yesterday. People may or may not have noticed it, but, it would give us one more meeting to sort of plan whatever security the board might want to think about in terms of an actual security guard with a metal detector. Um, I think the police off, or, uh, cap, the captain indicated that many municipalities and school districts are going that way. I just thought it would, I, I know there was some interest in being able to meet virtually. So I wanted to make sure the board understood that under the right circumstances, we could do that. Now, whether we've, the board feels comfortable that we could shift from in-person to virtual on the same day that we make the decision is up to the board. We would notice the heck out of it the best we could. I would suggest we would start 15 minutes late tonight, have somebody at Village Hall at, uh, 6:30 indicating that it's virtual. Um, also posting a sign when that person leaves on, uh, both doors indicating that it's virtual. The other alternative, well, there's three alternatives. The first is just to continue at 6:30 with a, with an open public meeting. The third alternative would be to adjourn this meeting until Tuesday so that the word could be spread more effectively that it's going to be virtual and not in person. But that, that's the last time we could do it. And as long as I'm talking about it, actually, uh, the modification of the open meetings law that allows for virtual meetings is more complicated and not less. I mean, before you could just say, "I'm gonna do it from my house. I understand. I may do it from my front porch. I may, I understand that the public has a right to come." And that's that. But now, unless you have a physical inability, you must be at where the meeting is occurring, or you must open your, three of you must open your houses. So if you, unless you have a physical disability, you have to be available to the public while the meeting is going on. So it's, it's actually more convoluted and harder to follow. The board would have to adopt some regulations. So I don't even know why they changed the law. It's just tougher. So, that's, that's what I got. Those are the, I think that's why we're having the emergency meeting is to see whether or not there is some interest in taking advantage of the ability to meet virtually through June 14th, which is Tuesday. Can't meet Monday because it's an HBV night. That's what I got.
Thanks, Jeff. Are there any thoughts from board members on, uh, what Jeff has shared with us? Anybody?
Jeff, thanks for, um, looking into it. Appreciate it. So, uh, my feeling is either, um, do, I don't know how pressing the items are on the agenda. Is there anything pressing that has to be dealt with tonight? Or there would be a negative consequence of not dealing with it till Tuesday?
Um, there is, Zach brought, uh, something to our attention. Um, uh, did he bring up the information for you, Dorothea?
Yes, he did. Um, in your packet, you've seen something from Midland. They're trying to do the paving next week, and he needs board approval to move forward. The cost did go up from, when we looked at it in April, it had a significant jump as we've been anticipating. So he needs approval just to move forward. They're ready to go for next week, and he's got to notify homeowners and he's got to notify Midland. So he really needed the board's A-OK. If the board's willing to do that with what they've received in their packet, and I'll give you the most current amount here, we could do that now and get him going.
Well, or could we do that, um, tonight, virtually? I don't know. If it's better to wait until the, the regular meeting time Jeff is saying.
Yeah, Jeff?
First, I'd be worried about doing it at this meeting because it wasn't agendaed.
Yeah.
I agree.
That's what I was thinking too.
Yep, I received this info afterwards.
So then, my, my feeling would be to schedule a meeting for Tuesday, make it virtual only, as is within the law and is allowed, and, uh, hold a short meeting tonight, virtually, regarding the, uh, the one item that can't wait from the DPW.
Yeah, and ju- just to, um, give a little further clarification, um, the, the, uh, this project actually was scheduled, uh, I think two weeks out from, you know, further out. And, um, I guess just the schedule changed a little bit, so it's, it's starting, um, earlier, which is why, you know, he just found this out. So, um, I think that's why he, he's looking for kind of a fast turnaround. Nothing more than that, really. And it's been budgeted for with the exception of the fact that, you know, we do know costs are going, going up. So, does, um, thanks for that, Dan. Um, any, any thoughts on Dan's proposal that we zoomed tonight?
Is it better to make, is it better to make a, uh, motion, or?
Well, Lily had her hand up. I just, you know, wanted to see if there's any.
Thank you. Am I being recognized, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, my opinion is, at this time, I have, if I may, being asked for my opinion, I have not discerned a credible threat. Therefore, as, um, a government official, I am most comfortable meeting as we have noticed that we have a public hearing and meeting the way we have noticed. And for the interest of transparency, I have, um, no qualms about meeting in Village Hall. And that is my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Lily. Yes, Dan?
Um, I hear your opinion, Lily, and I want to, um, vocally and adamantly say that I believe we have received a credible threat. I, I don't even think, I don't even think that's an opinion. I believe it is a clear fact.
Okay, yes, Justin?
Sure. Um, I, I appreciate this all being brought to our attention. Um, I agree completely with trustee Lanfear. From everything that has been brought to my attention, I do not perceive a credible threat. I would want to proceed with plans as, uh, they have been scheduled. And I, I hope that we, uh, continue to do so. I, I also understand that, um, from what has been brought, uh, to my attention, the police have not considered anything to be actionable, um, other than, uh, perhaps maintaining presence in front of, uh, Village Hall or, or, uh, having more awareness as they would for any other municipality and other circumstances when it's being requested. Uh, so my, my opinion would be that we, uh, maintain the existing schedule.
To clarify, um, in terms of how the threat was made, there was nothing from the standpoint of making an arrest that could be actionable, but they certainly, are concerned, and which is why they're willing to provide presence. Um, yes, Renee, did you have any thoughts on this?
I, oh, my goodness.
Does Roxy?
Yeah, I, my apologies. My goodness gracious. Um, I, I would, I am comfortable coming to Village Hall to meet this evening. Um, I've had a, uh, various conversations, um, with people about, um, the meeting. Um, I understand the most important thing to me is if, um, Mayor Plummer and, um, Jeff feel, um, comfortable, then I would be comfortable coming to Village Hall, um, this evening to, to meet. I do think we need to talk about, you know, setting up some, some safety measures, um, as we have previously discussed. Uh, but I think it's going to be difficult. Uh, I can't make a meeting on Tuesday. Postponing it, um, is difficult for everyone's schedules. Um, that, that doesn't mean we shouldn't move to virtual. Uh, but I'm feeling comfortable enough if Mayor Plummer and Jeff are comfortable coming to, to Village Hall, then I would be comfortable.
I'd like also, you know, we have staff here too that have, um, you know, been affected by some of this behavior.
And, and, and other trustees other than Mayor Plummer. Thank you.
Yes. Thanks, Dan. Um, I mean, I, I'm comfortable having a meeting. I may be more comfortable having it in Zoom. I think we can still conduct business that way and get done what needs to be done. You know, those are my thoughts. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
Lisa, Jeff passes his hand up.
Oh, Jeff, yes.
Well, since I was invited to comment, I will. Um, I want to be clear that everything we've talked about, about security measures has maybe less to do with, uh, the occurrences of Saturday evening than, uh, they do with the horrible things that are going on in our country. That for me is an ever-present risk that, one, I think the legislature should address so that school boards, municipal boards are not sitting ducks for the next person who is disgruntled by, um, the actions of some government entity and sees a nice opportunity to kill themselves and others. That, my, my point in raising the thought that we could do, uh, video through the fourteenth was to allow this board to have at least a little time to consider what other security measures it might adopt, since I, I am of the view that we are sitting ducks, um, notwithstanding anything that might have happened Saturday evening. I think, you know, anybody, any, any entity in our, in our country that doesn't take that risk seriously, I think, is, is mistaken. That's just my opinion.
You know, thanks, Jeff. And, um, I also would just like to, you know, reiterate that, um, I'm in conversations with all the other mayors in other municipalities and, um, to a mayor, they all have the exact same concerns. So I, you know, it's not just unique, I think, to our village. Um, I think everybody's looking at the way the world is and how we conduct business safely for everybody going forward.
There was, there are two questions on the, um, I think. I'm seeing two questions.
And I, I have one.
I was just waiting for the board.
I can't. Uh, I, I can't tell if I'm, uh, if you all can hear me and if I can speak because I can't raise my hand.
Yeah, I, yep, yes, Renee.
Okay. Um, Jeff, can you, I was, um, in transit when you gave the beginning of if we were to do virtual tonight. I just wanted to clarify, the, the one suggestion you had while we figure things out is to, uh, do virtual tonight, have someone stationed at Village Hall to alert people, start 15 minutes late. And we're allowed to do that because of the, until the fourteenth, um, without opening up three of our homes or our offices. Is that correct?
That is correct. I, I do have a little, the only caveat to that was whether or not the board felt that whatever, uh, notices we can come up with between now and 6:45 would be sufficient for the public to have notice of this. Um, that's why I suggested the possible alternative of a Tuesday meeting. And again, this was really only to put the board in a position to consider seriously security going forward, given this country's events.
Okay. And if we did the meeting on Tuesday, if we came tonight, uh, virtually or otherwise, and, uh, adjourned the meeting and rescheduled for Tuesday, Tuesday is when we would have to open it up, if three, at, at least three of us, um, if we were doing it.
No, we're good.
No, not.
I'm sorry, Renee, I interrupted you.
No, that's okay. I thought you said the fourteenth is when it expired.
Through the fourteenth.
Through, gotcha. Okay. So anytime after that, so actually if we did the meeting Tuesday, if we did the meeting tonight, um, virtu- virtually postponed till Tuesday, did it virtually Tuesday, that would give us, um, enough time to, um, talk about what, um, security measures we, we might want to have in place because after the fourteenth is when we would have to open up our homes if we were doing it virtually.
Yeah, but you would still have to adopt, uh, regulations before you could do that.
Yeah, okay, gotcha. Thank you for clarifying. Sorry if I'm interrupting. It's very hard to be on the phone.
Thanks, Renee. Yes, Dan?
So, I'll make a motion to, um, hold a brief meeting tonight, virtually, to cover the one, time-sensitive topic around the DPW. So agenda that, notice that as quickly as we possibly can in both, um, email, social media, and physical signs on the door. Start the meeting 15 minutes late tonight, and then either at tonight's meeting or right now, um, schedule the full trustees' meeting to be virtual on June 14th.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there a second? I'll second.
Do we want to answer the questions, Ben?
Oh, yeah, we have some questions. Thanks, Dorothea.
Yep. We had two questions. I believe the one was answered, but I will repeat it. Uh, Christine Muley asked if someone can clarify why this issue is being raised. Was there a threat to Village Hall, or does this relate to a broader national security issue?
Both.
Art Pierce commented he just entered, would also like to know what was the threat?
Jeff? Um, do you want to speak to that question? Art Pierce is asking, what was the threat?
I do not want to speak to that unless directed specifically by the board.
I don't think you need to.
Yeah, I, it's, I'm not comfortable with that.
It's, it's not going to help anything.
Suffice to say.
It would only serve to, it would only serve to inflame. It is enough that, um, several people on this board think it's, um, as serious as serious gets.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Oh, yes. Oh, Justin, sorry. Yep.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, uh, respond to the attorney's point about the, the national, um, issues. And I, I certainly agree that, um, that those are serious, uh, national and, and, uh, ones that are very close to home. Um, I can understand the, the reason for, for fear and for, um, taking action to make sure that Village Hall is, is, uh, and, and that all of our shared spaces are, are safe in response to that. Um, I already commented that personally, uh, none of the facts that have been brought before me, uh, appear as a credible threat, uh, that we would need to change a course of action for. Um, personally, I, I feel even less compelled to take immediate action and to change our meetings in response to the national issues. I think that, uh, we can, the, the changes that we make, uh, in terms of safety and security are not going to be put in place overnight. I think they're going to be longer term, and they're going to require thought and iteration. And, um, I, I do not, um, I, I think that at this point, um, our responsibility towards the public and to, uh, keep the meetings going and, and to, uh, maintain transparency is more important, um, than changing an action and, and going virtual immediately because of those national issues. Just, just my opinion.
Um, to be clear, uh, to be clear, again, again, to be clear, this is not just about national issues. Can't say that more clearly. This is directed and local and serious. You, you don't agree, so be it.
Thank you. And, um, I also just would like to add that, um, you know, you mentioned keeping the meetings going. The meetings will be kept going no matter what. We always want to meet and, uh, transact business on behalf of our village and work with our residents and businesses. So, um, I don't see that as being impacted in, in any significant way. We certainly were virtual all through COVID as well. Yes, Dan?
The, there's one other, um, pushback I'd like to give against Justin's statement. I do not believe that the actual number one priority is serving the members of the village. I believe that's the second priority. The first is keeping the members of our staff and our board and our attendees safe. Anything else comes out of that? Same story when I coached softball for little kids. Number one was safety. Number two is everything else.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Dan. Um, okay, uh, any more discussion from the board? We have a motion in a second.
Ma- uh, Mayor Plummer, it's Renee again.
Yeah, hi Renee. Sorry, no hand, I can't.
I know, I apologize. I'm just buttoning in. The, um, the, the, how is the staff feeling, or, um, about, um, tonight?
Uh, Dorothea?
That has to be in the office tonight.
Yep. Uh, Dorothea, would you like to speak to that in terms of? You have any thoughts?
I have thoughts. Um, this has been a very trying situation. It's, I don't want to say it's, this is something as a staff member, we, you know, we train, hear about, do, whether it's national, local. But it does come home to roost, and it's very uncomfortable. It's very disconcerting. And right now, we're second guessing everything that happens and watching our doors and just being careful. Um, I think it's silly not to treat any threat as a threat. If you're talking about it, there's definitely concern that. I can say Zach is concerned, Steve is concerned, I'm concerned. We look out for our people, and the last thing we want to do is deal with anything that could possibly happen. And the meeting room is open, and it should be, to be honest. In, in a perfect world, we should be, and we shouldn't have to think about this, but we do have to think about this. And the board needs to take time and get the proper estimates, do whatever we need to do to make it safe for the public to attend a meeting. And it just doesn't mean this threat. It means any threat, any possible threat. And you have another chat question, another question.
Okay.
Um, Christine Muley, again, I respect your position in not sharing more details. Our residents are vulnerable. I do feel we have a right to know.
I didn't hear the whole question, I'm sorry.
I respect your position in not sharing more details. However, if residents are vulnerable, I do feel we have the right to know.
Um, I, I will say that, that the threat, then when we, when we're using the term "the threat", um, it wasn't made against all residents. It was made against one who was an elected official. But the general concern for safety that we're talking about not only includes, you know, board members, staff members, but also residents, um, in a public space. So it's a, uh, two, multiple facets. Jeff, is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
No.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Okay, roll call, vote. Trustee Lightken?
No.
Trustee Lanfear has her hand raised.
I did.
I can't see you.
I know, I'm sorry. I'm trying, trying, turning a little bit, doesn't help. Uh, to clarify, the motion on the floor is that we do not, we, uh, do not have the meeting this evening except a short one, and then we have a ver- short virtual meeting, and then we postpone to next Tuesday to have a virtual meeting. And that is the motion. I just want to clarify. That's the motion that has been seconded?
Yeah, it was the motion to meet virtually tonight to, you know, take care of what was immediate that we knew had to be taken care of. Uh, meanwhile, continue to work on, um, security and safety measures and, um, hold the full meeting on Tuesday, virtually, and then, you know, move forward hopefully with some additional security measures in place.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I'm ready to vote.
Trustee Lanf- trustee Lanfear?
No.
Trustee Keating?
Yes.
Trustee Stetser?
Uh, Stetzer, yeah, yes.
Mayor Plummer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
How can we help get the word out for tonight?
Yeah.
Um, no, it's, it's pretty much similar as to what I just did for this emergency meeting. I would say we are pretty successful given the amount of time put forward. We did get attendees. I think it was well-placed. We'll get it out, and I'll send it out, and we'll get it notified. I mean, you, welcome to post on your Facebook pages. It's always helpful too.
Yeah, that helps, for sure.
Sign a, a sign on the door too?
Yes.
And we'll get a new agenda?
Yep. We'll table it just to DPW.
So we will, we will be actually starting the meeting at 6:45.
Correct, and I will send out the link. I will send your links out. Yes, Jeff?
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yes, Jeff.
You want me to attend this meeting? Doesn't seem like I need to, but I certainly can. No big deal.
I think, I think we're good. You know, we, we just need to, you know, move, move that contract forward for our DPW.
Unless, unless you were going to put on the agenda, security.
Which would be good.
But I don't think we have enough information.
I don't know that we do, but, yeah, we're still sorting things out. I mean, it might be better suited for Tuesday when we have maybe a bit more information. Renee?
This is trustee Stetser again, butting in. Um, the, so we're just going to do DPW, everything, the DPW, uh, contract, um, issue for paving. Um, the, everything else is going to be virtual on Tuesday. Tuesday, we'll hold a virtual meeting. Um, and then after that, we will move ahead. This gives us some, some space, um, from, from the issue and allows us to, to, to think through some easy things we can do, um, to make in-person meetings safer. And although it sounds like three of us were okay with coming in today, um, it sounds like it's, it's kind of split, and a few people are not comfortable, including some of the staff. And so, um, that's why I voted, uh, yes, um, because I think we need a little, a little space from this.
Great, thank you for that, Renee. Yes, Justin?
Just a further clarification. So no one is going to be attending the meeting from Village Hall today, is that correct?
Um, I will be here and I can forward, you know, direct residents to go to virtual as well. I typically do the meetings here because all my paperwork's here. If I took it all home, I wouldn't have a big enough vehicle.
Yes, Dan?
Um, so there, there were no public hearings. I, I'm just thinking of how we notify some other people that maybe were going to come because they had specific items on the agenda. Are there, are there applications? I, I don't have the agenda in front of me.
No, the agenda was very light. It was No, the agenda was very light. It was, the only thing we had was the bid results. We can do those Tuesday. I'll reach out to Scott Harder. It's not a huge thing.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, Lily.
I had some member items, um, that I was going to address this evening's meeting. And, uh, I know some residents were interested in those member items and had, uh, uh, planned to attend. Do I understand that I would not be able to address those member items this evening? Or I would be able to address those member items this evening?
Well, why wouldn't we? We could still put member items on. Why not?
What I had heard was you were only going to discuss the DPW contract and that was it. So I'm just, as a point of clarification.
Right, I understand that. And, and what I'm saying is typically, we would do, we could do member items. I mean, Jeff, is there any reason why we wouldn't be able to address some member items? Or should we wait till Tuesday?
I mean, if you were going to address anything, member items seem to be the right thing to address because they're not really noticed anyway. But, I mean, yeah, I think it's up to the board. I don't, it's a downfall, downside either way.
Um, and further to that, I would also add that it would be a good idea to put public comment on there as well because we have that on every agenda item as well. So, so now there are three agenda items, which is that DPW contract, which is time-sensitive, and then member items, and then public comment.
Okay. Yes, Jeff?
I renew my question. Do you want me there or not? Somebody might come up and remember items.
I know, that's what I'm thinking, yeah. So I'm going to say yes.
There goes my night off.
I know.
Well, it should be a quick meeting at least.
There goes the poker game.
It should be quick, I would think.
Okay, um, any other, any other comments before, uh, we, oh, we're all asked for a motion to adjourn?
I will make the motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee like it?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Hi.
Motion passed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Dorothea.